The mayor, we are live.
Great, thank you. So today is March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is seven twenty-seven P M. And I am calling to order the Ballpark City Council regular virtual meeting. And I believe we will start off with an invocation from Pastor Flores.
I think pastor is not joining.
Is Pastor Flores not here?
Yeah.
Okay. So I believe, okay, so we can skip the invocation for now. We can move on to the pledge of allegiance. City Clerk Garcia, can you lead us in the flags and the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, my goodness. Yes, thank you. Thanks. Yes, please stand if you can place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic. In one nation, under God. Liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. City Clerk roll call, please.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila here and Mayor Emmanuel Estada.
Here, thank you. I believe at this point there is nothing to report from closed session as we have not adjourned. Announcements are council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening. And each council member has paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. At this moment, we move, we move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And I believe we have an affordable housing development presentation by George Lopez and Steve Hernandez from the Caesar Chavez Foundation.
Mayor, before we do that, I'd like to close on behalf of some individuals in our community.
Sure, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Um, I recently learned, former Mayor Lozano informed me that Mark Flores, a longtime Baldwin Park resident passed away of cancer. And I was so heartbroken to learn about that because Mark Flores and his lovely wife. They they had a very tragic loss. They lost their son in an accident, motorcycle accident. And they created a scholarship fund in his name and helped so many students in our city over the years. You know, as they were applying for college and and it really just they they took so much pride in showcasing the talent in our community. And I loved their heart, not only, you know, Mark's heart, but his wife and the couple that they were because they took such a tragic moment in their lives. And they made it very positive for others in our community. And so I just wanted to close on behalf of Mark Flores and extend our condolences to the Flores family. During this really difficult time, our prayers are with them and such a young, you know, vibrant person. And so, you know, I I'm, I'm sure that others would agree that, you know, he was, he left us much too soon. But yeah, again, just want to close on his behalf, extend our condolences and our prayers to the Flores family. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that Dr. Aurelio Flores had his services. I believe it was last weekend and I also would like to put in a request that we plant a tree in his name. Just for all the contribution that he offered, that he provided to our community. And so, Shannon, if you can, you know, make note of that and take action to plant a tree at Morgan Park in his name. We would really appreciate that. And I'm sure that the Flores family would as well.
Thank you, councilmember. And and I I did get to meet Mr. Sorry, my list is a little bit off. I did get to meet Sir Flores. And I knew about his son and the music found the music scholarship. I I remember when I was in high school, I actually applied for that for that scholarship. And it's unfortunate to hear they they were very involved in the community. I got to see them multiple times. I know that they would be at the street marker, at the street markets with the pins and sharing about their their mission. And they were always involved. So Shannon, we can make sure that we we plant a tree for for both of those individuals. Of course, the Church of Redeemer and their pastor, they're 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 a beacon of hope here in Ballpark. And I got to recently experience what they do. And every Thursday they're out there, you know, handing out handing out food and helping out their neighbors. And and it's unfortunate that we that we have such great losses in our city at this time.
This is Mary.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Yes, again, it's, you know, it's the tragedy, the tragedies, you know, are unfortunate this time, especially those that have passed way too early, either from COVID or from cancer. Yeah, the Flores family, as you know, has made a tremendous impact. You know, planting a tree is, you know, one small tribute that we can do. You know, it's funny because we talk about, you know, the pins and so forth that they have. And I actually still have one right here that I got from them at the last street fair that we had because, you know, they're always out there. Every time I'm always going by and picking up a whole collection and just giving them away to friends and nephews and nieces. And most of the time, just the kids that are at the at the fair running around. But yes, you know, their impact, and I do hope they continue the the scholarship effort, you know, even after Mark has passed away or Mr. Flores has passed away. Because that would be another loss if that would it be. So perhaps, you know, when they come around next year for or perhaps sometime this year for seeking, you know, donations for their scholarship fund. You know, I hope all of us can contribute towards that individually. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I would also like to extend my condolences to the Flores family. It is a great loss. When they lost their son, like Ms. Garcia said, it was horrible. Actually, you know, their son was involved in that when my daughter was involved in that. So I've known of them for a very long time. And after he passed, everything that they've done for all the students here in the community is amazing. So my condolences to the Flores family, Mrs. Flores. Hopefully she will continue this. I know it'll be difficult, you know, doing it on her own, but we appreciate everything that they have done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I'd like to also close on behalf of someone.
Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, I'd like to close on behalf of Miriam Abdullah. She's a longtime friend, known her since high school. She passed away on March third. Miriam is survived by her loving children Hassan and Diala, as well as her parents Abdul Karim and Nabea Abdullah. Brothers Abdullah and his family, Rana, Ali, and Yusef and brother Manir. So I want to send my condolences on to the entire Abdullah family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Abdullah family and that was a, that was a shock. She's very young and, you know, what a, it's just sad news to hear of her passing. So my prayers to her family. I'd also like to close on behalf of a friend, Job Carvahal, who good man and father, loving father, husband, brother. And unfortunately, you know, another one that has been taken too soon. But I want to extend my condolences and prayers to the Carvahal family. And for the city clerk, his name is spelled J O B E Carvahal. So thank you.
Thank you for that, councilmember. Is there any other councilmembers wishing to close on behalf of anybody? No, if not, at this moment, we can, we can move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And I believe we have a presentation by George Lopez and Steve Hernandez from the Caesar Chavez Foundation.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, Ben Martinez, Community Development Director. I want to introduce George Lopez and the Caesar Chavez Foundation. George Lopez, not to be mistaken by the, you know, with the comedian, but very much so to be mistaken as someone in the affordable housing field that is well respected and known as an expert. And I've run across, working with Mr. Lopez for in a number of cities and projects. And he is, he's, he just, he's just excellent at what he does. So we wanted to do this initial presentation tonight, get feedback from the City Council and and then come back at a later date with additional presentation. So I'll pass this to Mr. George Lopez and his team.
Thank you, Steve. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ben, for the kind words. Steve Hernandez is going to start off.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, staff. My name is Steve Hernandez. I'm the Director of Business Development for the Caesar Chavez Foundation. And the the purpose of this presentation is to inform council and the community on the status of our proposed development. And then also to, more importantly, to receive feedback, comments, and answer any questions related to the development. As we were working very diligently with your Community Development Department and planning on their advice and feedback from what you guys have already present, envision for the downtown area. In addition, we would like to get your input on a potential city and CCF partnership on some city land that we name kind of Little Little Ramona, which is adjacent to our development, that would make the development a little bit a better development and make it a flagship and a gateway for the downtown area. So moving on to the next slide. So overall, we're going to go over just the background on CCS and I'll present that. And then my associate George Lopez will talk about the proposed project and the proposed partnership with the city. And then I'll be followed by Steve from Onyx Architects, who's the architect for this project. And he's going to go over a design concepts and some concepts on the gateway plaza that we're trying to propose. So moving on to the the next slide. So CCF was started over fifty years ago by civil and labor rights leader Caesar Chavez. After championing for the rights of farmworkers and working families with the United Farm Workers Union, Caesar wanted to go beyond just the the rights and getting fair wages for the farmworkers. And he wanted to encompass the whole dynamic and wanted to continue the success of inspiring and transforming communities by creating a different province of social enterprises. And the social enterprises that Caesar created was Affordable Housing Development, HED, which I work for, education, broadcast communication, and the National Chavez Center. Next slide, please. So the National Chavez Center is where Caesar and his wife Helen were buried and where he spent his last remaining years of his life. And which is was dedicated by Barack Obama as a national historic monument. And this is also where our headquarters is as an organization, but they host a different events for, you know, and training the next leaders advocacy. And people who want to make changes where we have this as like a leadership institute that we implement across the state. Next slide. He also set up an education fund and the education fund, you know, comprised of different academic academia, a community and social services that he transpires through different partnerships with school districts and also within every one of our developments has some type of education. Spin to it where we have through our CSEC weather learning centers. And they have after school programs to not only, you know, get fair wages, but also enhance the next generation of future leaders and advocacy. So they could be move up on the economic ladder of prosperity through education. The next one is our economic fund, which we're through, and this is really through the Radio Campesina and where they produce community building programs, entertainment, and also to get out the word of sometimes there's misinformation. But it was originally started as a way for the farmworkers to listen to some music, but also get out key information for the movement to ensure that they're informed correctly and making sure that they're able to, you know, enjoy themselves as they're as they're working. So we have that as our last fund. And the next slide is going to talk about what the what I work for. It's the Housing and Economic Development Fund. And we handle all of the development from commercial strip malls to apartment communities throughout the the Southwest. Next slide. And this is our overall purpose and vision of the Housing Economic Development Fund. And through this fund, we consider it a stepping stone to homeownership by offering rents to affordable working families by paying lower rent, lower than market rents, and which also helps them pay bills and enhance their living situation for economic growth to go into eventually homeownership. So we use this as our, you know, building those community and personal assets to move on to the next level of homeownership in which they instill pride in their economic foundation as a family and a core niche. Next slide. And this slide, it covers this, our overall organization, we we build all through the Southwest, mainly California, Arizona, New Mexico, and Texas. So our experience level of dealing with different funding sources and making sure we adhere to, you know, the requirements that we promised to hold ourselves accountable because we are, you know, stewards of not only public funding, but also local municipal funding and the approvals that we promised the city leaders like yourselves on every one of our developments. So as you, as you can see there, we have quite a array of affordable units throughout the state and the Southwest of about four, over forty-five hundred units. And then we have about another two thousand in the pipeline that we're going to start developing pretty soon here. Next slide. The thing that separates us from all the other developers is we're vertically integrated. So we control the whole process of development. So instead of someone coming and say, oh, I'm blaming the property manager, it's not doing it right, or the general contractors not holding to what we what was promised. You know, we control all of it. So if we need to, you know, in an ideal world, everything goes perfect, every everything operates correctly. But sometimes there are some some issues that come up that we're able to address in-house instead of having to go reach someone else to get stuff done. But we are, we have everything within our own, our own house, and we could hold our own team accountable. We make those promises to the city and to the the elected official to say, you know, you promised to to make sure we're going to maintain the property with great, you know, lucrative landscaping. You know, what happens that landscaping, then you should come to us and we will definitely fix it because we have that reach within our own department. Next slide. And this is just what we're trying to propose here is it's another flagship development that we did in the city of in downtown. And it's an example of our flagship gateway that we're trying to develop here in the city of Baldwin Park. And this is mainly for the Alvera Street and the La Plaza Museum and to more to identify that track as, you know, as using the both of those as a corridor for the the inspired of the the Latino inspired ancestry of downtown L A with Alvera Street. So this ties that whole track together, which is adjacent to Chinatown, but it tries that whole track together from Caesar Chavez Boulevard to the one-on-one. So this is an example of a development that we completed. It's about three hundred and fifty-five units. And this is where our offices are located. Next slide. These are just other examples of it of it's getting built. And as you can see, to the east or to the left of the slide, you see that's up. La Plaza Museum is right there, located next to the church. Next slide. And this is a rendering of inside the Palmer complex, but to the right is the picture of our 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 future, our current office that we're just moving into now. And that's where CCF headquarters is going to be located is on that lower right side. Next slide. I'll be followed by George to talk about the proposed development.
I thank you for having me, City Council members of the city of Baldwin Park. My name is George Lopez. I am the Director of Project Development. Due to some time constraints, I want to focus on the reason we're here. And that's the opportunity to further our potential relationship with the city of Baldwin Park by creating a public-private relationship to develop the Little Ramona parking lot of adjacent to our proposed project project site. As you can see in the slide, our proposed project in which we currently have site control on under is the red boundary. Our intention is to develop that site as a future affordable housing development. The the boundary in green is the city-owned parking lot in which we're calling Little Ramona Parking Lot. Next slide, please. Um, we feel that it's an opportunity for some synergy. We have experience in working with Baldwin Park staff members at various cities. And there's a natural comfort level and working with the city staff. In addition, it's my opinion that this specific project site location, physical location is the ideal definition of affordable housing. It's located to, it's located next to adjacent, a wide array of different amenities from the Baldwin Park MetroLink Station, various parks, the library, grocery stores, public high school and a middle school, a senior center, health center, and various pharmacies. Next slide, please. And working with city staff on the proposed development and also attending the various community meetings in regards with the city's specific plans. Specific city specific plan consultant. One of the discussion points that came up from that meeting is from the community and from the city specific plan consultant is the idea of developing that Little Ramona parking lot, the idea of turning that site into like a gateway, a flagship, or like a gateway to the city or a moniker. And that's the reason we're here. We we feel that we're as an affordable housing developer, we're afforded certain opportunities to pay certain funding programs that can help the city develop that that site. Next slide, next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned before, you know, there's various funding programs out at the state level, whether it's the California Development of Housing Community Development, basic program, whether it's the Transportation Oriented Development Program. We have direct experience in working with different funding programs to obtain infrastructure dollars for prod for affordable projects to help develop projects like like these. We've been awarded over fifty million dollars this last round to develop such a project in a different city. But we have that direct experience and and knowledge and working with various cities to develop infrastructure projects to help develop these sites. Ultimately, we're seeing if the city would be interested in forming a private public relationship where we can develop that area in green. If the city would is interested, we would pivot our design and incorporate that Little Ramona parking lot into the overall affordable housing design and work with city staff on creating like a unique space in that Little Ramona parking lot. Next slide, please. Before I hand it over to our architect Steve, I want to emphasize that these next slides are just schematics of what we could potentially develop on on the Little Ramona parking lot in conjunction with our affordable housing development. Steve, if you can take over.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, councilmembers. As George mentioned, this is just early conceptual massing of some things that we could do. But we were really excited to get involved right at the time you're reconsidering your specific plan. And we've been thinking about how we can incorporate the things that you want to achieve within that specific plan. But within the context of your of your current specific plan. So even if we're proceeding and we move forward prior to the adoption of the new plan, we want this to be compatible and looking forward to the spirit of that plan. Let's go to the next slide. And so, and these are just giving you some quick images of different kinds of buildings and scales we could do. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've, as you've seen with Caesar Chavez Foundation's projects in downtown Los Angeles, we can also provide color and interest and rhythm and scale. Next slide, please. So before we go too far on that, as we saw this opportunity for the public-private partnership and the space out in Little Ramona, we wanted to stop, take a breather and see if this would be of interest to you. Because as we look at this, we can see the various issues that we use to solve the life safety and fire access components of the site. And we can see there the fire department access and the need to get to the farthest corners of the site either with vehicles or with firefighters pulling fire hoses. But at the same time, as we solve those technical issues, we want to think about the spirit of the place and how we can engage the public arena. So let's go to the next slide. So here's some things that we see as real opportunities. You're coming in on the MetroLink diagonally and through this large intersection at Ramona. And as you approach the MetroLink Station, the building can kind of take that corner and address it as an entry for the MetroLink. Additionally, it feels like a real gateway into the downtown when you're coming westbound on Ramona Boulevard. We are currently thinking of orienting our most public functions, community rooms, leasing offices, meeting rooms, lobby, all those things, orienting south towards Ramona to to activate that part of the street. And again, we also have this pedestrian connection from the neighborhoods to the north, straight down to the MetroLink. And so with those ideas in mind, let's go to the next slide. So here are some of the things that we think we could do is while preserving the technical aspects of providing fire access, we think that could be other ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, but it's not being used by the fire department, be a really wonderful pedestrian plaza. We could do, you know, decorative paving elements. We can do outdoor street furniture. We can make gathering space there. We can strongly define the street edge at Ramona and reinforce the the street landscaping that will curl along there. We also think it'd be a great place to have some kind of vertical element that could function as sort of a welcoming gateway and wayfinder for this neighborhood. Let's go to the next slide. And so here's some other parks in Southern California. You'll see up in the upper right-hand corner that's the park at Hope and Ninth Street in downtown L A. And that is a clock tower that they have decorated with with a tile mosaic and that provides a gateway into a plaza that's immediately off of some very busy and large streets, but it provides a welcome relief. This a lower right corner shows some trellises and fencing that help provide and define a street edge that makes the park or the plaza area have its own sense of enclosure and shelter. At a lower scale in the lower left corner, there's, this is down in Temple City. There's some masonry walls and trellis elements that help to define an edge. And in the upper left corner, you can see some shelters with with curtains and other elements to provide accommodation indoor-outdoor space. Next slide, please. And again, here are some other types of corner and tower elements that help to define an edge and an entry point. And so we're just thinking that with just this early brainstorming, we think it'd be a great time to engage the city and see what your interest would be in our developed being government, being able to provide those kinds of amenities right near the MetroLink Station, right as an entry into your downtown specific plan area and just kind of serve as a node and a focal point, visual wayfinding point, and just a public gathering spot. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to George and Steve Hernandez.
So that's the end of our presentation. I don't know if we can take questions or not, but feel free to ask.
So Mayor and councilmembers. So the purpose of tonight is to introduce again Caesar Chavez, the concept here. If the council, I think the most important thing is to hear back on the possibility of working in the what they call the Little Ramona parking lot, which right now is basically a totally underutilized parking lot, just kind of sits there vacant. If we got that direction to at least look at concepts in that area, then we could work with Caesar Chavez to then, you know, produce some some actual plans and ideas and bring back those concepts at a later date. So just to be clear, if the council would like to work with a parking lot area, then we can develop plans and concepts to include that. If the council were to say, no, we don't want to work in the parking lot area, just work in the area that they control. Currently, they can also provide and finalize their their concepts for that as well. Staff is is proposing though and recommending that we do at least explore this parking lot area because we think and for the reasons that Caesar Chavez's team has has discussed, it would be this parking lot area because we think and for the reasons that Caesar Chavez's team has discussed, it would be good amenity and something attractive, something that would contribute and be in line and meet the goals of our downtown specific plan. So we'll end the presentation then and take in as to end the presentation now and take any questions or comments.
How many?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, hold on. So what is the amount of proposed units in that in that property?
Eighty.
And then is there, is there a parking, is there a parking place for all those? Or where would they, where would those cars potentially park?
Steve? Yes, our our parking would be an underground garage.
And then how many units are you planning on, how many cars are you planning on being able to store in that parking garage?
We haven't fully determined that yet. We are adjacent to the MetroLinks. We're hoping to that people will take advantage of that, but we are hoping to achieve at least one parking space per unit, if not more.
Yeah, because I, my only concern is that the average household has more than one car nowadays, right? And then I know that I think we allow another housing project to use the parking structure for the metro. And then sometimes, you know, if it's a big event or something at the city, then it's hard to find parking. So my only concern is that we haven't, that we want to consider, you know, the parking use a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Depending on the direction city council wants to go, ultimately, we'd kick off the engineering staff to do exactly that. I know parking has always been an issue and is for every development where it's affordable or market rate. But in our portfolio and doing a parking analysis, you know, most market rate developments are over two parking, right around two parking spaces per unit. And our portfolio due to it is affordable housing, you know, there's less resources to spend on vehicles. It tends to be about one point three parking spaces per unit. So our intent is to park our residents in our development. You know, we don't want our residents leaking onto the various adjacent communities and parking there. Okay, thanks. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you. I think I've seen your developments. Your development's the one right there in downtown. Again, that's right off the entrance onto the ten freeway, correct? Or the one-on-one freeway?
Correct. It's located
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the as that has raised, you know, over the last couple of years to where it's at now. It's very beautiful. It's very nice. Can you just go back, if staff can go back to just the rendering? How large are you proposing or how many floors are you proposing for this development to be?
Well, it depends on the direction from city council. But ultimately, it would be a podium design construction up to four stories.
Yeah.
There would be four residential floors and then it'll be a parking garage, podium, a parking garage, subterranean parking garage underneath that.
It's a combination of two, three and floors, four stories. And as we go further northward towards the single-family residence, pardon me, towards the multifamily garden apartments zone, we're stepping down to two and three stories.
Yeah.
Right.
Emphasize that we, we've been working with the city staff on, because currently you guys are updating your downtown specific plan. And what we're, what we're proposing and going to propose is going to be in line with your new downtown specific plan.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's aesthetically, you know, in concert with what we already have, at least in the height. With already the stuff that we have in downtown and future items. You know, the other thing I would say, you know, at least a suggestion on my part was in regards to the little part of Little Ramona Parkway as you're talking about it. I would, I would ask that, you know, perhaps if we could explore taking that entire parking lot and actually use it as a pocket park or something of that nature, not only for your residents, but the rest of the residents at large and so forth. Because if you just carve it out and cut it in half, it's still going to be another underutilized parking, parking lot. So if we're going to do this, my suggestion would be to, you know, consider, you know, working with staff to see if we can take the entire park, entire Parkway. And yep, there we go. To the left, if you're looking at the screen, and take it all the way down to the other part and make it into a pocket park, right? Or a transient park where people could, you know, when they're walking their dogs or whatever the case may be, that's open to the general public. I'm not sure if that if the current green area, if you were thinking of enclosing enclosing that area or actually having it open up for the entire residents that are not part of the housing development. But those would be just a couple of suggestions from my part. Because otherwise, we're going to have a, you know, very beautiful building and still a very ugly concrete pad to the left of that. So if you can work with staff on that.
Yeah, that's something we can definitely explore. We'll work with, you know, your community development office to work your public works and also your city attorney's office to try to incorporate that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, council member.
I have, I have a question and a concern. And this may be a little bit biased because my office is actually right in that shopping center next to the proposed project. And so my question was also going to be on that Ramona, that Little Ramona parking strip there. Right now you have it cut off. So if you were to take that whole piece, where would the people that go into that shopping center park? Because the part of that parking lot is used for that shopping center. There's not a lot of parking in there. And then also, if you were to divide it, would you put a gate blocking or dividing both each side of the street? Or how would that work? What are you currently proposing in that Little Ramona area there now?
So I think ultimately, we'll fall back on what the city council wants to design, whether we incorporate just half of it or for the whole thing. And we will work with the city staff to come up with a plan to appease your, your, your design requirements. I can't really comment on the exact design. This is just more of a feeler to see if city council and city staff is open to this idea.
Maybe come with two, maybe come back with two options, only because my concern again is going to be the parking. As it is, we really don't have much parking in the city. And if you're proposing eighty units and you're maybe giving two parking spots per unit, you're going to have one hundred and sixty cars parked underground. If anyone in that complex has any visitors, where would they park? Are they going to come into park on Little Ramona over here? And if we take it away, are they now going to come and park on our, in the shopping center there and take away from the clients that come in and park there? So that's going to be something that we really need to look into, obviously, besides the traffic study. But maybe if you guys want to come back with two proposals, one with just dividing half of Little Ramona and then one taking it over, just to see the, you know, what we can look at, because my biggest concern is going to be the parking there. It's going to, it's going to create a nightmare.
Yeah, and I, I kind of agree with Councilman Damian. Parking is kind of the concern. You know, the pocket park, if I'm not mistaken, across the street, they're already going to landscape that by the CNG gas station. And I know that they're going to put benches in there. So it might not be the best idea to put a pocket park there. Especially with, with, with the amount of parking spaces that you're going to be able to allot. So that's, I think the biggest concern for this council is parking. You know, we've allowed other developers to come in and then they, they use public parking and that kind of takes away from potential customers, right? We want to, we want to develop the downtown area, but if there's nowhere to park, nobody's going to want to come here. So we can, we could potentially explore it, but I don't think, I personally, I'm not so comfortable making a decisive decision on it. Just because that's my concern, parking cars, as Councilmember Damian mentioned, you know, they have visitors, where are they going to park? And then it does go towards the residential area. And then, of course, the, the people who live in the residential area are going to complain about it. Or, you know, they're not going to be satisfied with having an increase in cars parking down that street. But, and since we are on the topic of housing, I am a big, big supporter of housing. And I guess maybe not related to this, but I do want to see, you know, if there's a way to make sure that we can, that some of these units will actually go to Ballin Park Residence, right? We, we talk about affordable housing. But if it doesn't benefit the residents in this area and it's just going to increase the population, it's not going to do a lot for the residents here. So while we're at it and we're exploring, I think that's something else that we should look into.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
What is the square footage on these units? Have you found that out yet?
I think we're still working through the engineering. Steve, I don't, I don't know if you have those numbers up top of your head.
I want to say it was I think it was around five eighty for the, the one bedrooms, eight hundred, do I want to say eight sixty for the, the two bedrooms? They're about, the one bedroom is about twenty-four by twenty-four. The two bedrooms are about twenty-four by thirty-four. And the three bedrooms are twenty-four by forty-six in general.
And are these rental units or to purchase?
They're rental, multifamily rental.
A rental? Okay.
Mayor, I just want to make a correction. I wanted to say that I was concerned and not biased.
Well, you have a little bit of a, of a dilemma, right? A little bit of an ethical dilemma, better word.
Yeah, so you know, when it comes to voting, that may be something that I may recuse myself from, but one of my concerns is the actual parking.
Yeah, and I think we're all concerned about the parking, as I said before. It's, it's a big issue. And then touching on Mayor Protem's topic, how affordable are these? Because I, you know, affordable, the term affordable has been kind of thrown around and as more and more for profit developers try to come into that market, you know, they've expanded on the term of what affordability really is.
Okay. So affordable, in terms of, I know it's a big misconception. So affordable, like what is affordable housing, low income workforce housing? And there's a lot of like misconceptions about these, these terms. So affordable housing is the housing for incomes below a certain income range. You know, low income housing is that rent restricted housing and then workforce is mainly kind of like a lower income where they have higher than the AM, the below AMI income. So for this project, it's going to be, for this development, it's going to be families, working families earning between thirty and sixty percent of the area median income. So what that means for Baldwin Park, like the current median income for Baldwin Park is about sixty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand dollars a year. The current AMI for LA County is about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. So that's a, you know, it's kind of right below sixty percent of the added income right now. So in essence, the majority of the median income of Baldwin Park residents could qualify to live in our development. So we're going to serve thirty to sixty percent. And what that means is families or an individual earning twenty-three thousand to about seventy-two, seventy-three thousand can qualify to live in our development. So that's like the ranges. So and we're using for a family of fours, use a family of fours, kind of the, the median family household size for the city of Baldwin Park. So you're taking that into consideration, the rents would be between six thirty-three to seventeen hundred dollars, depending on what your income is for these developments.
And Steve, that's for a hundred percent of the units, right? It's a hundred percent affordable.
And that's and that's across one, two and three bedroom units.
So all the units would be affordable, not a certain percentage of the units? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, the rent would range from, I'm sorry, you said the rent would range from six thirty-three to approximately seventeen hundred dollars a month for the one, two and three bedroom units?
Yes, sir. And I could break that down a little more. So the one bedrooms will be from six thirty-three to twelve sixty-seven. The two bedrooms would be from seven sixty to fifteen twenty-one. And the three bedroom will be eight seventy-eight to seventeen fifty-seven. And it's all, it's all dependent on your income. If you do sixty percent, unit's going to pay, I mean, a little higher than a thirty percent unit. Over.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, council member, Garcia?
Thank you. You know, I'm looking at the project and I am a proponent of redevelopment, revitalization, affordable housing, especially in our downtown areas. So I appreciate, you know, what, what you're trying to achieve here. I, I do have some concerns with the, the number of floors that are being proposed and I do if, as I scan that block and that neighborhood, I do think that this would really stick out. And for me, it's always been about compatibility of uses. And so, you know, I get having a dense housing project near the MetroLink station, but I think it would really stick out in this location if we were proposing up to four stories. And, and then I didn't quite understand when you add the podium, you know, what that elevation would look like. If it's subterranean or you know, again.
I, I think, so what you're seeing in the elevation is the residential floors and the low, the low gra, the low ground. Yeah, subterranean parking garage.
So yeah, so the four stories start at the ground.
Yeah. And so I think adjacent and Ben or Ron, you can, you can comment, but adjacent to just, I think south west of this parking, southeast of this parking site is the new developments are in line with our proposed project. And we're proposing is in line with the, your current specific plan update you guys are going, going towards right now.
Right. Yeah, we are looking at a higher density. I just, again, for me, it's always about the compatibility. And I get that this could be a catalyst project. And I do, I am familiar with the, the new project. I think that's a three-story product. If I recall. So the four stories is really, you know, it's really it, for me, it's really out of place. If it was across the street, there are three-story buildings, I think, that would lend themselves to like a more transitional height. But in this, in this specific area, if I, if I scan the neighborhood, it's really one and two stories. So jumping to four stories is, I'm not sure if I would feel comfortable with that. And then as far as the architecture, well, first going back to, I think what some of the other council members have mentioned is, you know, just it's not, it's not coming together for me on the parking, on the, you know, the, the city's lot. And I get that you guys own one lot and there's a different owner for the commercial lot right, right adjacent. But I would like to see, if something was being presented to us, I would like to see something a little more seamless, a little more cohesive. And again, for me, it goes back to the compatibility of the uses. And then finally, the architecture for me, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm seeing it, you know. I tried looking at it and really appreciating it, but I'm not really seeing how I would really welcome, you know, this wonderful project to our community. So those are my concerns with the project at the moment. It doesn't mean that it can't be modified. But that's what I wanted to share that and just be really transparent in my thoughts. Since you're, you are looking to our input. And I, it sounds like you've done some really great projects in other locations. So I don't want to take that away.
Yeah, so our intent is to continue working with city staff on redefining, redefining the design. And in fact, we, we have held off on moving forward with the entitlements and design to get, gather input from your specific plan update and community events. And so we can propose a project that's in line with that. We did not want to ram a project in which wasn't aligned with your future vision of a downtown specific plan. And so obviously, we're amenable to continuing that conversation and making a design that's in line with the city council's vision. We're not proposing to incorporate any kind of parking in that city-owned parcel. We saw this as an opportunity since the specific plan update identified this area as a potential area to create a quote-unquote space to leverage the resources that are available to us as a, as a nonprofit affordable developer and get those dollars to you, whether we develop it or the city developed it and develop a unique space in that area. And with regards to parking, parking has, has always been, is and always will be an issue. And our intention is to park our, our, provide enough parking for our visitors and our, and our residents and our, underneath our building. And it's always a tricky proposition because the state Um, and it's always a tricky proposition because, um, the state, um, has certain laws and regulations that prohibit, prohibit us from over-parking our site or the city imposing a, um, a higher number of parking than, than what's, than, than what's required. On top of that, it makes, um, over-parking and affordable housing development, it, it makes it extremely difficult to find the, uh, the gap dollars necessary, the financing necessary to, to develop, uh, the project. So ultimately, what I'm alluding, alluding to is that we will continue working with city staff on, on our design. But the intention of ours, of this meeting was to see if there was any steam with regards to incorporating that, uh, that Little Ramona parking lot and using our resources to get those dollars necessary to develop that site that's in line with the future downtown specific plan.
And George, I, so I would just like to add that I, I appreciate your comments about the architecture. And in fact, we stopped, uh, partway through and it, and I know this looks kind of precise because it was put on a computer, but we were actually at the earliest stages and we stopped before we developed it further because we just wanted to know, should we be incorporating more of Little Ramona into the discussion? Um, so I didn't mean for this to be read as a, uh, as a, a final design concept in any sense. It's really just the earliest sense of potential massing. So I, I appreciate your comments and they were astute.
These units do have an elevator, correct?
Yes, uh, one hundred, uh, percent of the units in the elevator building are, uh, are, um, accessible or adaptable, so.
Yeah, and I just like to point out, this is Steve from CC, I'd like to point out that George, George has mentioned, uh, you know, bringing in outside dollars. Um, and I know a lot of times, uh, when you're going through the specific plan, we have a lot of these visions that the community, as we've been sitting through these community meetings with a specific plan, um, they've been highlighting they want, you know, pedestrian, green space and all that. But a lot of times we plan for it, but we don't have the financing, uh, to pay for it. And, uh, using our, George and I's expertise is finding those dollars to have that money built, uh, have that money available to the city and us, so we could build it as part of our development and tie it to housing. So you could tie infrastructure, park space, green space, bike space into the development and bringing, so the city doesn't have to build it. We could build it with other, the state's money instead of using city monies and city's tax dollars to build that, uh, that green space or what they envision in the, in the specific plan. Over.
Yeah, well, I don't, I think it's a, I mean, the, the concept is interesting. I think it looks, I think it looks nice. It's modern. It's, it looks like a quality building for affordable, you know, for affordable housing for, of course, you know, the average family. Um, and I, and I think the four stories make sense. We're in the downtown area. We, we've talked about it as a council, the housing element. Everybody, uh, has, has spoken in support of density in the downtown area, so I don't see why it would be an issue. You know, we've, we've allowed, uh, you know, I, I live on a, on a street where there's a bunch of residential homes and right in front of me, there's three-story luxury condos. So if we can make it work for, uh, luxury and for-profit developers, I don't see why we can't make it work for a nonprofit that's going to bring in truly affordable housing. Um, I like the idea of modernizing our downtown area so that it looks nicer and that it's aesthetically, aesthetically pleasing, not just for the residents, but also for the, for the, uh, potential customers that, that may want to come into the city. Like I said, my only concern is, is the parking, right? And we want to make sure that it doesn't take up our streets. But I know that we've, we've partnered with four private developers again on our part, on our parking and helping them meet their parking needs. So I don't see why it's not a possibility for us to partner with, with you and figure out those needs for your development. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that that's something that we keep in mind, right? We want to make sure that there's enough car, uh, enough car space for those residents. I, I think a lot of the times, it's not something that we think through and we just don't want those cars to bleed out into the neighboring residential area.
Duly noted, Mayor. Those are all great comments. Um, again, you know, like I'd ask for, uh, Steve and George, you know, to come back with the, you know, as council member, uh, Damian mentioned, is come back with various options for us to look at and see what that, what, uh, what that looks like, uh, in the sense of landscaping, pocket parks, or however other areas we can use that. Uh, the parking is a concern, uh, regardless of, you know, the shopping centers' usage or not usage. Uh, you know, the, uh, eighty sites, you know, guest visitors and all that stuff. So, you know, just take that all into, into consideration as you come back, um, and continue to look at, you know, uh, the, the dialogue with us. So thank you again for, uh, presenting this, uh, project for us.
Thank you. By all means, get creative with it. We're all here for that. So thank you for presenting. Thank you for, uh, taking the time to be here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So at this point, uh, we do move on to Women's History Month proclamation. And I believe we have, uh, former council member and current president of the Women's Club, Cruz Baca with us.
Yeah.
Great. And so we will be presenting to her our, our proclamation, proclaiming Women's History Month, uh, March being Women's History Month here in, in the city of Baldwin Park. And I am, and I am, and I'm proud and excited to, to present it to, to Cruz, who I know has been involved for a very, very long time in the city and she's been a great, a great example of, of what women can achieve here in our city. Of course, along with, we have Mayor Pro Tem Avila, another strong figure in our city. We have a, a finance director who's a woman. We have a lot of people in, in City Hall and I'm, I'm excited to be able to present this to you.
Oh, thank you very much for this opportunity, Mayor Estrada, and of course, council members. And, um, I don't know if, if they had a chance to see this, but let me see if I can put it up over here so you can see how beautiful it is. And to thank you so very much for such an honor and, and a wonderful opportunity. Um, I feel very privileged to have had, uh, not only very strong women, um, figures, um, in my family, my grandmothers, my mother, um, and my aunts, and, um, and of course, all the women, uh, throughout my lifetime that have been, uh, such an inspiration to me at a time, uh, where I think I've mentioned before that it was very difficult for women to have a voice. And I, we've worked very hard for that. And even though we still have a way to go, but I feel that we have made a lot of headway. And for that, I'm going to keep it short. Thank you so very much. I'm ex, ex, exceptionally honored to be receiving this. And as you know, the Women's Club organization is the oldest organization in Baldwin Park. It's over a hundred years old. And, um, I mentioned this to the ladies earlier today when we had a meeting. And I want to tell you, they're all very excited about this. It'll be wonderful when we renew our, our clubhouse for us to put this up on the wall. So thank you very much, Mayor Estrada and all the council members. I feel truly, truly honored, uh, for bestowing this on us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for being here, uh, Cruz. And of course, it's a reminder to all of us that we keep everybody's struggles in mind as we move forward and we look to develop Baldwin Park into a more equitable city for all of us.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Of course, and, uh, and we are moving on to the American Red Cross Month, if Erica's here. And of course, the, if I'm not mistaken, the American Red Cross was also, uh, founded by a woman and that was Clara Barton, if I'm correct.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Great. So I, uh, I don't know if maybe, uh, Councilmember Hernandez wants to, uh, say some words regarding the American Red Cross Month?
Uh, yeah, I mean, with everything else with, uh, their ongoing commitment to service, you know, as the history comes around with, uh, Red Cross, uh, you know, the service overseas with the military and how that came, came about, uh, you know, here, uh, back to the home states. Um, and their, you know, uh, Clara's, um, you know, ongoing fight with Congress to make sure that the Red Cross was focused not only on disasters across, uh, the country and across the pond, but actually focused here in the United States. Uh, so their, their organization is rich in history, um, you know, not only, uh, you know, in Congress, but also here in our local backyards. Uh, you know, as we talk about, uh, you know, International Women's Month and international, we have International Women's Day earlier this, earlier this month. Uh, you know, Erica is one of those, another prime examples of, you know, of strong leadership. Uh, you know, working with each and every one of us and throughout the San Gabriel Valley, uh, it's a pleasure to, uh, you know, celebrate uh, everything in the spirit of, uh, you know, of giving, uh, that, uh, you know, the American Red Cross, uh, San Gabriel Valley chapter and its, and its, uh, California chapters, uh, do on an every, uh, base, on an everyday basis. So thank you.
I, I would just like to say thank you to the city of Baldwin Park. Um, thank you for your continued support in preparing the city and for welcoming us to, uh, support uh, the community in its emergency preparedness plans. Um, I really appreciate the mayor and city council and city staff, all that have been so great to work with. I'm excited to start the Prepare Baldwin Park Coalition. Our, our meeting is Tuesday, um, at five PM. I, I hope residents and, uh, city stakeholders will join us and, and think about their own individual preparedness and also their community preparedness. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yes, I just want to take this time to just, uh, thank Erica for all your work that you do for the American Red Cross and all of our communities. Thank you very much. And then, um, also wanted to say a couple of words about our former council member Cruz Baca. I've had the opportunity to work with her alongside on many, many events in the community. Uh, and I just want to take this time, Cruz, to say thank you very much for all that you've done for this community and continue to do and the work that we have ahead of us, uh, to provide a better quality of life for our residents. I know where your heart is. Um, you know, I've been alongside with you on many fights, uh, to try to bring justice to this community as well as, uh, organizations to give back. And so from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you. Thank you very much, uh, for leading the way and for all the hard work, uh, that you do for our community. I really appreciate it.
Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
I also want to thank Erica with the Red Cross. I know, uh, you have been involved a lot lately. So thank you for everything that you're doing and providing for our community. It's greatly appreciated. I also, uh, want to thank Cruz for, for being here and getting this proclamation. Uh, she is definitely a good leader, a good president in the Women's Club. I know I have not been there lately, but I've seen her in action, putting out the fundraisers, all the dinners, everything together as well as volunteering at the church and for different causes like, like Mr. Damian said. You, you are a great personality here in our city because a lot of people know who you are. They, they look at all the things that, that you have gotten done and that you continue to work with the community. Um, I still get a lot of people asking me about you and where is Ms. Baca? And I, I tell them where to find you because you're always working with the church and the community and doing a lot for us. So thank you for all the work that you do at the Women's Club and thank all the women at the Women's Club. I do miss everybody. So hopefully, uh, we can start having gatherings soon. Thank you again, Cruz.
Thank, thank you. And, uh, Mayor, real fast, I just want to say that I think I have it in my DNA, going back to my grandparents that helped during the depression, uh, delivering food to those that didn't have any. And, um, I truly believe that, um, this is something that I was born to do. And, uh, thank you for teamwork because I've had a lot of like Danny and Alejandra and a lot of you that have helped me when I start to organize things and I make that phone call, um, to you asking if you can please help. So, uh, it's a team effort and all of you have helped to, to make this a better place for us to live in. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, thank you Cruz. You know, I know you, you do a lot in the community and you're, you're always involved. So you, you not only lead, you also lead by example and you show what can be done when we work together, right? So thank you for that. And, uh, city clerk at this point is, uh, I will open a public communications. Is there anyone looking to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, four individuals who like to speak. They are Kiana Martinez, Catherine Loscher, John Rios and Elizabeth Landeros. I'm going to defer to our deputy city clerk.
Thank you. The first caller is Elizabeth Landeros. I'm calling her now.
Your call has been forwarded.
Do you want to try one more time, city clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Sorry, I didn't place it on speaker, but let me try her one more time.
Your call has been forwarded to an odd.
Okay, you can try the next one.
The next caller is John Rios.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Rios. This is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. Uh, you have three minutes for public communication, okay?
Well, let's start with that, uh, roadblock that you guys did over the weekend, you know? It was supposed to be for DUIs, not for, uh, license plates. If there was something wrong with the car, okay, but for driver license, there wasn't supposed to be. You're doing the same thing as Rosado did. And Taylor, okay? So the community is a little upset that you guys are going that way. And they want to find out. Let's put it on, uh, Facebook or anything, okay, for one thing. You guys have to remember that you guys report to us. Whatever you guys do, we're aware of everything, okay? Like I mentioned earlier today, I had requested to take care of the Caltrans. I talked to, uh, Gutierrez over a year ago. I talked to the chief of police too. When I had that conversation with him, we need to get rid of all that stuff that's going right there at Bar Spire. The community is not very happy right now. Because you guys are not responding to us. Remember, you guys report to us. And we're going to, anything that goes wrong, now we're going to start bitching about it. On the other hand, court enforcement and public works, they be doing a good job. I call them up, there's some problem, they take care of it right away. They don't hesitate to respond to the community. I tell them, you know, the community want this done, they respond to it right, right away. So that's about it for right now. So in the next meeting on that communication with a five o'clock meeting, where can I get the agenda so I can talk on it? Let us know where we can get it. Are you going to open up the city council now? And that's about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. Uh, city clerk, who's next?
Catherine Loscher.
Great. And while you dial, while you dial that, I do want everybody to know that every single agenda is available on the Baldwin Park Granite's website. So what, the same place where you can find the regular meeting agenda, you will find the special, uh, city council agenda as well.
Hello?
Hi, is this Catherine Loscher?
Yes, sir.
Hi Catherine, it's Mayor Estrada from city of Baldwin Park. Uh, I was calling you regarding public communication. You have three minutes, okay?
Thank you so much. So, good evening again, honorable mayor, mayor pro tem, council members, community partners, fellow community members. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Again, I'm Catherine and I'm the community library manager of the Baldwin Park Library. While the LA County libraries are still offering sidewalk service at this time, we will not be offering sidewalk service or answering phone lines tomorrow, March 18th, due to staff development. But we will be offering sidewalk service and phone service again, starting Friday, March 19th, this Friday at 10 a.m. And while the library is closed tomorrow, our digital library is open for ebooks and more. Then uh, the treasury department in, in the international, excuse me, the internal revenue service announced today that federal tax filing, there was a bit of an extension. Um, and so while we have a little bit of time, I did want to mention that the library does have some tax forms that we are distributing through our sidewalk service. And those include, they include the California 540 as well as federal 1040 forms. If there is a specific form that, that is needed, customers can print up to 10 pages free of charge every, every library business day. And uh, pick it up to our printing pickup service. And staff are on site most all days except for tomorrow and the weekends to help with any assistance that's needed in that. And then I did also want to mention a couple of upcoming virtual programs that we will be offering. This Saturday, we have a program called Beyond Kimchi, an introduction to Korean cooking. There's a, a lot more to Korean food than barbecue or kimchi. So, you can join us this Saturday for a, a fun and informative cooking workshops with the traditional Korean cuisine with a chef and cultural historian, Hae Jin Cho. And then we have another work-ready program on Tuesday, March 23rd called The Art of Conquering Fear, the A R T of Conquering Fear. And this presentation is going to be led by a bestselling author and inspirational speaker, Christy Dimitrikis. And um, she'll uh, give tips on how to conquer your fear and try, and provide practical tips on how to pandemic-proof your career. Um, for the most up-to-date information on the LA County Library, you can follow us on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can also check our website at lacountylibrary.org. And at the Baldwin Park Library, we are always very happy to take calls at 626-962-6947. Thank you all so much for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Mayor, while we have her on the line, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Catherine, are you still there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, thank you. Um, some residents told me that, uh, and I think there were some emails that also came through uh, the uh, library service. Um, can you just share with us, um, while we're here, uh, the, the apps, Libby and also RB Digital and what those uh, do for and how those can be used uh, for the community? Because those are great resources, but sometimes they're a little bit hidden.
Yes, absolutely. I am um, definitely a Libby addict myself. So, uh, if anybody ever needs help, you can also give me a call at the library and I'm more than happy to walk people through that. So, Overdrive and Libby are, are one and the same. Um, it's a service that offers uh, ebooks, audiobooks as well as magazines now. RB Digital has actually also folded into Overdrive. So, it's a one-stop shop. Libby is a part of Overdrive. It's, it's got a really easy to use app where you can view and read your ebooks as well as magazines or listen to audiobooks. It's, it's very easy. It's, it's pretty intuitive. Um, once you check something out um, and you check it out, just like you would check out a book on our shelves. Um, and then it will be in your account. You can open it right up. You can download it ahead of time. So, you don't need internet to, to listen to your audiobook or read your ebook. And um, I'm afraid at the moment, I don't remember how many specific items you could check out at a time. But it's a lot. I have, I have like 10 audiobooks on my account right now. So, if anybody has any questions, please give me a call. Again, I am a Libby addict and I'm happy to walk anybody through that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you. And thank you Catherine for providing that extra information. Uh, city clerk. Great, thank you. City clerk, who's next?
Our next caller is Kiana Martinez.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Kiana?
Yes.
Hi, Kiana. This is Mayor Estrada calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. You have three minutes for public communication, okay?
Okay, thank you. Guess my thing was a little behind. Okay, so, there's a lot that I wanted to comment on. I am a community member from the community group People United of Baldwin Park. And uh, we've been discussing that uh, we want the city to have a participatory budget process when reviewing the budget at the next review. For the next budget um, development. And for this review uh, with the special meeting that was went through, uh, we would like there to be amendments uh, to cuff, uh, to cut overinflated budgets and invest in our safety and health as a community. We would like there to be a budget cut to the uh, Baldwin Park Police Department, including divesting funding for checkpoints, police wages, weapons, vehicles and hiring of new police department employees. And instead, we ask that you invest in our community safety by funding vaccine distribution, rental assistance, community-based housing projects and mental health clinics. Specifically, this can include funding a program for trained professionals to respond to mental health crises, uh, mental health crises, rapid response hotlines and drug addiction treatment centers. Um, this is because uh, those things are the things that the police respond to in a violent way that harms people. And so we like a non-violent response to social problems in our city and our community. And also I know in previous meetings, uh, council members have, uh, especially council member uh, Garcia has told us that we do not know what we're talking about with the budget. Um, so with uh, according to S San Gabriel Valley Progressive Action and Million Dollar Hoods Project through UCLA, Baldwin Park has the highest police budget in the San Gabriel Valley. And to tell you about what a participatory budgeting process is, it's where residents discuss, develop and present and then vote on public event, on public investments. When designs vary, um, the public, the, the designs vary and it starts with neighborhood assemblies where residents learn about the process, delegates are elected or volunteer to craft specific project and budgetary proposals, often with technical assistance and vote on winning proposals later. And so that's just um, an example. And this has been done in um, according to BP expert Michael Minzer of the Brooklyn College. This has been done with regions around the world of uh, over 14 million people and 20,000 residents in Germany and also across the United States as well, California and different places. And specifically for the police budget, um, I would like to know uh, for y'all to go through that with us. And this could be included in the participatory budget. But I looked through the line items and I don't know what a lot of things mean, like equipment purchase, professional services, um, consultation services, depreciation and uh, vehicles for like large amounts of money. Uh, so that's something that we want to look at. And of course, uh, with the, the money for the jails was not something that was good. That's a lot of money for $400,000 and that's something that could have gone towards our community. And so that's something that I definitely do agree with either. And I also wanted to know, uh, this is the last question. If for the lawsuits against the Baldwin Park Police Department, does the city pay for those or does the police department pay for those out of their budget? So that was my other question. And that concludes my comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Kiana. Uh, city clerk, is there anybody else looking to speak?
No, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
I have a letter from St. John the Baptist. Uh, they asked me to read during public comments, please.
Uh, please, go ahead.
Okay, it's dated February 19th, 2021. Dear Baldwin Park City Council, we would like to express our gratitude and appreciation to the city of Baldwin Park and San Gutierrez, Director of Public Works, for all your help during our Ash Wednesday Packet Distribution on February 17th, 2021. This past year has brought us many unprecedented challenges. We have had to adapt to a new way of living in our lives and it has not been an easy change. We know COVID-19 has brought us to a new reality. But like any other challenge, we can overcome great barriers as a community. The safety of our community has always been of utmost importance to us and will continue to be. Your help during this year's Ash Wednesday allowed for a smooth, quick and safe distribution of ashes. We appreciate your collaboration with us and look forward to future opportunities to ensure the safety and well-being of our community. St. John's the Baptist always will be willing to assist and collaborate with the city council. Thank you again for your generosity. We look forward to your continued support. Sincerely, Father Michael de Gutierrez, pastor of St. John's the Baptist.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Um, and then before we do, before we move forward, I do want to address the DUI checkpoints. Those DUI checkpoints were not called on by council. Council didn't uh, direct anybody to bring up those checkpoints. The check, those checkpoints were, were grant-funded. And they were specifically for DUI and, and valid license uh, a checkpoint, right? For, for valid licenses and DUIs. And I, like every single other uh, resident, I know that there was a lot of uh, worry and there was a lot of questioning regarding that. And I, like every other resident, shared that concern. And I want everybody to know that I shared that concern with our chief. I shared that concern with our CEO. And we made sure that this was not one of those checkpoints from the past. And I don't, I don't ever want anybody to say that I am here to follow the footsteps of anybody else because that is not the case. When I first met chief, I made it very clear to him that there was a path to mitigate and a relationship to strengthen between the community and the police department. After I hired, after we hired chief, I made it clear to him again. And, and chief has, has demonstrated that he is uh, invested in, in, in bettering that relationship. He understands the need to work with the community. And I don't think that any of us are here to target our residents as it's happened in the past. And that's something that I want to make very clear. Uh, during that checkpoint, uh, people had the opportunity to have a, somebody in the car take that, that vehicle. Or they had the opportunity to have somebody come and pick up that car. But we weren't there under the guise to make, to make any sort of profit for any department in the city. And that, and I, and I want to make that very, very clear because I don't ever want to hear anybody claim that this is what that, what the new council is doing because it is not. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, chief, uh, the, the police caught three, three weapons. They, they towed away those cars and they towed away the cars of, of three people that were driving on their suspended license. 10 others did not have a license and those cars did not get towed. Chief, chief did a, I think chief did an amazing job and so did the Baldwin Park Police Department in understanding that, that, that these are, that the checkpoints are not the most favorable, even 10 years later. And I think that they, they, they pulled it off well and they, and they kept those concerns in place. So, that's something that I want to make very clear for the record and of course for the constituents. Because I know that there is uh, there was a multiple, multitude of comments regarding that. And so chief, I don't know if you want to comment on that checkpoint and how it went?
Mr. Mayor, before the chief comments, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, again, I stand with you in those comments. Uh, you know, not only did they uh, provide and leverage uh, the various resources and options that they have. Uh, you know, during that, during that uh, checkpoint session, uh, there was three guns that were also removed for, uh, from, from the drivers. Uh, so those are guns that are not on our streets, uh, because they were concealed weapons, uh, to be very clear about that. So, I do appreciate uh, the chief of police and the, and the staff that's, that was out there doing this. Uh, because it did make our, our streets uh, and our residents safer. Uh, that is one of the primary reasons for why we do this. And as you mentioned, uh, you know, we shared the similar concerns, uh, as, you know, as, as, as regards to what the, as the previous department did, what they did. Uh, this was more about safety and awareness. And that's exactly what the officers did. You know, I know the chief was out there. Uh, I believe a couple of council members went through the checkpoint themselves uh, on Saturday evening. Uh, but I want to commend you. Uh, in addition, I also want to make sure that uh, when the chief speaks, uh, you know, we had a recent incident in which uh, you know, officers um, went to a home. Um, and because of their skill set, uh, they were able to de-escalate and not actually cause uh, you know, um, a officer-involved shooting uh, with their guns. Uh, because that was a, of a young, young man or an individual, excuse me, uh, that uh, was going through some unstable, uh, mental uh, situation. And the police officers recognized that. And because of their training and because of who they are, uh, they were able to uh, mitigate and prevent uh, any real violence um, with that. To the point where uh, they didn't actually arrest the individual, uh, because they've been there, they've worked there. And that speaks to, you know, uh, these officers at least, um, you know, having an understanding of the relationship of, you know, our constituents and uh, the folks that they serve. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, may I be for the chief as well, please?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you. And I just want to echo, uh, what you have said, Mayor, and what council member Hernandez had said. Uh, it was definitely for the safety of everyone and we were not here to target anybody because we are here definitely to make a change and to make sure our community is safe. Uh, as you know, drunk, drunk driving is an issue, not only in Baldwin Park, but all over the country. Uh, I'm sure you all have heard of the map Mothers Against Drug Drivers. And, and it's a concern because we want to make sure that we educate the community that it's not okay to drive intoxicated. And that is the reason why we have these checkpoints. But at the same time, that is the reason why we ask that they have somebody come and pick up the vehicle if possible. We were not there to impound their money or take, impound their car, excuse me, or take money from them. But to let them know, it is not safe. They can hurt themselves. They can hurt others. And, and it's not a good situation. So, I think these checkpoints, I need people to understand, they're very important. Please do not drive while intoxicated. Have somebody else drive. It, it's not necessary for you to be out on the road. It puts everybody's lives in danger. And that's the idea of this checkpoint. Our police officers are, are well-trained and, and the idea of all this is to change that aspect that we have of the past department that did impound cars. I'm not going to lie. They did. They were after that. But this uh, new department, this council, we are not looking to do that. We are looking to make sure that our community is safe because safety is first. And I do commend the chief. Um, I was one of those council members that went through that checkpoint. They had no idea I was going to go through there. I went through this, through there. There were apps. I had my license out the window, ready to show them. And when they saw me, they're like, oh my gosh. So, I actually went into the area where they were talking to people. They were very respectful and they were waiting. I saw some people waiting for the car to get picked up. So, I do commend you chief and your department and the men and women that were out there working to make sure that not only the community was safe, but those drivers, that they were safe themselves. So, we're looking to help the drivers as well. Keep that in mind. We're not there to attack you or to target you. We want to make sure you're safe and that we all work together to make sure everybody's safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may?
Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead, council member.
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to point out that, you know, I've been a council member for 14 years. Um, I know that Ms. Avila uh, joined the council two years ago. And um, I just want to reassure the public that as long as I've been a council member, um, you know, we have, we have tried to promote the safety of the city. And um, you know, the, years ago, there was an article in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune that called out the pedestrian fatalities in our city. And they were, I think the title of the article was "The Dangerous Streets of Baldwin Park." Um, unfortunately, there have been some fatalities involving drunk drivers. Uh, one in particular that I recall is uh, the young woman that was, that was killed in front of St. John's um, church. And so, you know, that there, we've, we've all have experienced i- in some form in our city. Uh, I know that years ago, there was a drunk driver that hit a man at his car and impaled him to the point where he lost his legs. Um, so these were, you know, we should not just disregard um, that these were lives that were impacted. And, you know, so there was a grant that was, that we received from the city of Baldwin Park to conduct DUIs, no different than we did over the weekend. And when the community brought to us the concerns of, you know, this is how our city, these are how our residents are being impacted. The city council made the changes. And I can speak to that because I was a council member at the time. And so what did we do? We deviated from state law. We created, we created our own city policy. We allowed people to have others come and pick up their car if they, you know, if it was found that they were driving without a license. We also, you know, reduced the, the fees so that I think it was only on the third, on the third time that the car was, or you know, that they were found to be either driving without a license, that the car would be impounded. And then at that point, the, the fees would kick. And so we actually deviated from a state law so that we could continue to promote public safety in our community while at the same time being sensitive to the residents in our community and their circumstances. So actually, City Clerk Marlen Garcia was on the council at the time. And so, you know, I'm sure that you recall just, you know, all that we did to, to try and be responsive. So I, I don't want to paint this idea that, you know, in the past, the city was out to, to gain financial benefits from DUI checkpoints. Because I think that that's, first of all, it's, it's, it's trying to recreate history. And it's, it's promoting a narrative that quite frankly is very self-serving. Because, because at the time, I was on the council. I know, I recall, you know, what we did in response to some of the community concerns. And it really is no different than what we experienced over the weekend. The difference is that now we do have, you know, immigrant communities that can obtain licenses. And so I'm glad for that. It really does address a lot of the concerns that, you know, the challenges that we had to deal with in the past. But I would join all of you in, in saying that yes, it is good to be monitoring our community for drunk driving, to be monitoring our community for any weapons that, you know, are illegal or any, any illegal activity. So I, I just wanted to add that because it's, you know, I, I've been here on the council and to, to try and portray like this was good, but in the past it was bad. You know, I felt like the need that I needed to share a little bit more perspective on that. Thank you.
Council member, I, you know, with all due respect, I cannot let you downplay the history of what happened ten years ago. As the son of an immigrant mother who didn't have a license at that time, I know that this is not as, as downplayed as you want to make it seem. The city of Baldwin Park made over a million dollars. And Royal Coaches made three million dollars off the backs of working-class families. They took advantage of the fact that they knew that they would get away with towing their cars. We had Univision here. We had news articles. We had the grand jury of Los Angeles make a report on how bad it looked and how questionable the contracts that we were giving out were. And in two thousand eighteen, the council completely ignored all of that and gave Royal Coaches a ten-year contract, a decade-long contract. After the grand jury of LA had said it was questionable, that it was a questionable practice. We had targeted families, four million dollars out of the pockets of, of working-class families. And I cannot let you downplay that. Of course, council member, it seems, it would be self-serving to downplay that since you were a council member there. And, you know, for full clarity, Royal Coaches has funded many of your campaigns, including the last one. But as a, as a, as a, as a, as a son of a working-class mother, I cannot let you downplay that.
Okay, well, let me, let me add that you're, you're really throwing a lot of, you know, ingredients into a pot and mixing it all together. Because yes, I have received contributions from Royal Coaches, but that never took away from, you know, my role advocating for my residents. When the item was brought to us, that this was how our residents were being impacted, we changed our policy in the city. Again, we deviated from state law, which is what, you know, most cities wo- would abide by state law, right? Would you agree? And in that, in that case, in that case, we went ahead and we deviated from that one to allow, you know, family or friends, relatives to come and pick up their cars. No different than what happened over the weekend. We also, we also implemented fees. I think it was on the third time that a car was impounded. So, you know, I, I, I can appreciate the sentiment and I can appreciate that. You know, there was a lot of emotion around the issue. Because I, I understand I was there, you know, I was engaged in those conversations. And part of the team that deviated again. But again, I just want to point out that what we did over the weekend is no different than what we've done in the past. And I think it's just important to point out. And yes, I have received contributions from Royal Coaches. Royal Coaches has done a great job in our community. And yes, we did deviate from state law to, you know, create a more responsive policy when it came to DUI checkpoints in the past. That's all. Thank you.
That's fine. You did deviate from the law, but four million dollars too late. Councilmember Damian.
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate some of the things that were spoken about the DUI checkpoint. I, I also did receive a lot of calls. A lot of people were upset. A lot of people were thankful. But I just want to make it clear and I'm just saying for the record, so the constituents who are listening or listening later can understand our point. This was not something that we just came in as a city council and started to implement, or the chief of police, just because he was hired, started to implement. This is something that was based on a grant. And that's the reason why it was done. Now, we all expressed to the chief of police, Chief Lopez, how this is a wound for our community. And I was one of those activists fighting back, back in the day when I was seeing, you know, children, you know, being left on the side of the street, on the curb, on the car seats, because the police officers were not allowing someone to come and drive their vehicle away. And there's video recorded on that showing where people were begging the police officers, hey, look, you know, we're calling someone, they're going to come and, no. The tow truck would come, they were towing the car, they were still pleading with the officer to let them, you know, drive the car home because this person had a license. And they're carrying this baby in a car seat. It's heartbreaking. And yes, it was something that was done maliciously. Was there money involved? Of course there was. And yes, you know, I don't want to speak negative or bad about, about, you know, any particular company, but at that point in time, Royal Coaches had a lot to do with it. And it was very upsetting to find out when the council went ahead and still gave them an exclusive ten-year contract, knowing how much they profited, not only off of our community, but off of our undocumented community. Because at that point in time, AB sixty had not passed. So all, all of our undocumented members, community members, who were driving without a driver's license, really didn't have an option. They had to get to work. They had to get their family to certain places, but they weren't able to obtain a license. And yet we were profiting off of them because we were still towing their vehicles away. Look back at the checkpoints and I can guarantee you that there was over a hundred vehicles that were towed in the past compared to what was just towed recently. So yes, we do got to have to give and take. And we are, as long as I'm a council member, I am going to fight and advocate that if we have a checkpoint and someone is caught driving without a license, that we give them the opportunity to be able to have someone come and drive their car away so that it doesn't get towed and we're making money off of that. And I'm just going to kind of say this in Spanish because I know that there's a lot of people in the Spanish community who want to know this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, as you can tell, this is a very heated conversation and heated issue. But to put things in context, because again, I think it'd be fa- it'd be false to say that it was driven by one company. The reality and truth be told, this was driven by the chief of police at the time. Okay, he is the one that authorizes these type of actions to occur. They were the ones, and I say they, because it's, these are folks that have all moved on. And, you know, they used the cover, in my opinion, of this grant to do these type of operations. You know, I went through some of these checkpoints back then and I made them where, you know, then council member Garcia and also the mayor and Marlon Garcia. Because what they were simply, essentially doing were they're doing these insurance or checkpoints, you know, at seven in the morning, right, you know, off, you know, Los Angeles and so forth. And they were doing, you know, essentially they were going, you know, towards, you know, targeting our immigrant community. So again, uh, let's just put, you know, let's just put the blame where the blame lies. And that was at the time, the chief of police and some of the, and some of his, you know, the command staff at that time. It is what it is. You know, this is something that I had to deal with and Chief Lopez will certainly understand this. Because I worked through this process also with LAPD. Because during that period of time, you know, there was no policy. AB sixty had not been incorporated at the state level. I worked viciously to make sure that that was work, that was happening at the state level. But more importantly, that was something that all the cities in the region were, were doing and being impacted. The change of deviation that Mayor, excuse me, that Councilmember Garcia speaks to is exactly that. They deviated from the state policy. And even we had, in the city of Los Angeles, we had city attorneys telling LAPD, as an example, not to do this. The chief of police at the time said, no, I'm going to deviate from your recommendation. I'm going to deviate from the policy to implement and provide these type of, you know, these type of roadmaps. The city of Baldwin Park, you use that as a template as they were, as they were discussing their own issues to resolve this in our community. So this is not just something that was specific to our city. This was something that was happening across all cities in Southern California, but specifically, more importantly, immigrant communities, you know, such as ours, El Monte, South El Monte, La Puente, Whittier and all those other areas. And what also occurred during those periods of times, if my memory, if my memory serves me correct, is some of those smaller cities did not deviate from state policy. So, you know, we have to give credit where credit's due. We recognize, you know, what has happened in the past. And I think the most important thing about all of this is, you know, the, our police department has moved forward, has learned from that, from each and every one of us's inputs. And, you know, I think this past weekend just shows, you know, what they can do when they understand our community. And that's exactly what, what has occurred. So, you know, with that, you know, I'd love to hear the chief.
Yeah. And just for the record, the chief works for the council and the council directs the chief. But go ahead, chief.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and the council members appreciate the time. And I, I did listen to what you all have said about the, the concerns of the past. And I wanted to make sure that we, we paid attention to that, especially to concern the community. So, you know, just to give you a little bit of insight, as a result of that checkpoint, nine hundred, we had nine hundred and fifteen vehicles pass through that checkpoint from, it started about seven thirty in the evening and I start, I got there to watch it begin. I was there for a few hours and, and we, we went to about midnight. Ten people were cited for being non-licensed. None of those vehicles were impounded. Three people were, were cited for suspended license. Their vehicles were impounded because that's, it is a, it is a law. It's a California Vehicle Code section that their vehicles are to be impounded. One of those individuals have been cited four times for being an unlicensed or on a suspended license. And, you know, so I, obviously he's not adhering to the, to the law. We did recover three, three firearms. One of the, one of the individuals was arrested for DUI, driving under the influence of methamphetamine. All in all, of nine hundred and fifteen vehicles, we only impounded six. So that, that's a huge amount of vehicles that go through the checkpoint. You know, I monitored the activity of the officers. The officers were very professional in dealing with the, the drivers as they were driving through, those that were, that were pulled off to the side for further inspection. They were offered the opportunity to make phone calls. I watched as, as family members were making phone calls. We made sure that their cars were parked in a, you know, safe spot and they came back and picked up their vehicles. So all in all, I understand the concerns of the, of the community and the concerns of the, of the council. So we made sure that we were adhering to the thoughts and concerns. And, you know, the other thing is with this grant that we are, we're involved in, we apply for this grant every, every year. And it's not just for DUI checkpoints. It's also for impaired driving, saturation patrol for, for driving under the influence. It's also provides training to our officers that, that we can afford to, to get, to provide to our officers. We're also able to buy equipment. This year, we're going to be purchasing a, a sign trailer with a built-in speed radar. Calibration for our, our devices that we do checks on for, in, under the influence drivers. Just a different amount of equipment and training, especially for the in continuing to stay on top of the, the new laws and the, and the process for driving under the influence. We also do impaired the cellphone driving, the targeting the distracted driving. So we do a lot of that and, and there is a lot of education. So not everybody gets a citation. People are also warned. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that it's not something that I take lightly, that I do listen and I, and I made sure that we were adhering to the concerns of the public, our, our community as well as the council. So I want to thank you for your time and thank you for your support. And we'll continue to work towards that goal to make sure that any other future checkpoints so that we're, you know, we always advise the, the community, advise the council and making sure that we're following the steps that, that, that we all have been directed to do. So thank you again for your time. And I'm glad that the, the arrest with the firearms didn't result in anything else that, that could have gone wrong. So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I want to thank chief and I, and I want to reiterate that, that chief has been very, very open to hearing our, our concerns and how we can better our relationship with the community, which I think is, is one of the best qualities our chief has. So thank you for that, chief.
Thank you, chief. And all those men and women out there working, they did an excellent job.
Yes, you did. Thank you.
So at this moment, I do move to closed public communication and we move on to the consent calendar. Are there any items any council members are wishing to pull?
I'd like to pull item four, please.
Is there any other item? If not, I'll pull item number seven. And maybe just six, just so we can reiterate what we studied in the, in the first session. And if not, I make a motion to pass items one through nine excluding four, six and seven. Can I get a second? Any objections? Great, thank you. So item number four, the floor is yours, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I'd like to prove, cool, excuse me, item number four, approval of resolution twenty twenty-one point zero one-two to deny an industrial disability retirement claim for Raymond Finley. I would like to move this to another meeting because I, besides the report, I don't believe we've had a conversation regarding this. So I would like to have a conversation in closed session to get more information. So my motion is to move this to another meeting.
Second.
Any objections? No, your motion passes.
Thank you.
And then item number six. So I know that we had a full-on study session in the special meeting, but I just kind of wanted to reiterate so everybody's aware. I know that the budget has been a concern for people. Is Rose here?
If not, yes.
Yes, mayor.
Oh, hey, Rose. Oh, cutting off a little bit. Yeah, it sounds like she's having connectivity issues. Yeah, so maybe, oh, okay. There you are, Rose. Yeah, so maybe if you could just reiterate for us, I know I know that the budget is, is in, is in much better shape than we expected it to be. So if maybe you just want to reiterate that for, for the public and for it to be on record.
Yes, I know, Mayor and city council and the members of community. Tonight during the study session, we present the overview operating budget for the general The overview operating budget for the general fund. The originally adopted general fund budget had a deficit of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Due to the better than expected revenue came in such as. Property tax and sales tax and also a business license. And we expected to have about one point one five million dollars increase in revenue. And also, we projected about eight hundred twenty-three thousand dollar increase in expenditures. If this will brought the deficit down to eighteen million. For our projection ending June thirty, two thousand twenty. Uh, this is a big decrease, yes? Yes, mayor.
Oh, you said eight, eighteen thousand, right? The deficit is eighteen thousand.
Yes, uh, decrease from the originally adopted. Deficit three hundred fifty thousand to eighteen thousand. However, this is a very conservative projection. And I feel confident by the end of the fiscal year in June. Most likely, we will be able to close this uh, gap.
Great. And that is, that is great news, I, if I'm not mistaken and if I did the math right, I think that's a ninety-five percent drop in our, in our, in our expected deficit, right?
Yeah, yes, uh, this mainly are due to. The decrease in personnel costs and lots of savings and cuts. Uh, have done by all the departments come together to meet the projected. Reduction due to the impact from the pandemic. And however, our city did not get big hit from uh, many taxes. We continues to see property tax increase in city of Baldwin Park. And the sales tax came in uh, much better than we were originally expected. This helped out the city a lot.
Great, thank you, Rose.
Do you want me to go further and?
No, I think that's it, I think we just wanted to kind of get a little bit of an overview of the budget because I know, um, you know, I know the budget is a concern for everybody. I know that it's, the budget is always a concern for, for constituents and residents and especially now with the pandemic and, and, and you know, that potential drop in, in income and revenue. So I'm, I'm excited, I'm proud, I'm thankful to city staff and the E-team for making sure that. That uh, that expenditures weren't too far off and, and that we're looking at a really good number, you know, potentially to, to what it could have been. So I just wanted you to give everybody a brief overview on that, so thank you, Rose.
Yes, mayor, I also want to let the public know that we also post. The amended budget including the original adopted budget and amended budget. On the city's website with the line item, detail line items. For all the accounts, for all the uh, detail description, description for each account. Uh, you can find it under the city's website and the finance under the budget. For all those line items with all the increases or decreases posted there.
Great, thank you, thank you, Rose. So at this moment, I'll make a motion pass item number six.
Second.
Great, thank you, any objections? No, so item six passes, um, and then item number seven, I believe, I'm gonna, I'm going to assume that this has to do with Manny.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, keep talking, but yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir, uh, this item was pulled with the, the city council, like for me to give a brief presentation or do you have any questions? Specifically in regards to the spring first, Spring Fest twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, maybe just a brief overview on what Spring Fest is gonna be and, and how you're gonna handle that.
Absolutely, my uh, my pleasure. The, the purpose of this staff report is for city council to approve the Spring Fest to be held Saturday, April third, twenty twenty-one, which will be the day before Easter. The, there is a small fiscal impact, the fiscal impact to fund the Spring Fest is approximately thirty-five hundred dollars for materials and supplies. The police department has sufficient uh, staff and staff to provide adequate coverage for the event and will not uh, incur overtime. Public Works Department will expand approximately twenty-four hundred in staff costs. And they can absorb this within, within their existing overtime budget in special revenue funds. Recreation Community Services will, will do the same, we will ab- absorb the um, the cost. Although there is a three thousand dollars in, in salaries for part-time staff with five hundred for full-time staff. And uh, some materials and supplies. Uh, we have not had a spring uh, extravaganza type of program for the last few years due to, due to COVID or I should say last year. And our last event was in twenty nineteen, so staff is, is, is very cre- creative. And we are going to administer a program very similar to what we did for Halloween. And all of their, all the participants will stay in their automobile and we will have the Easter bunny running around. And the families can take pictures while in the car, some selfies or and or just images of the Easter bunny. And we will pass out, I believe, twenty or twenty-five uh, bags of trinkets and Easter eggs. So the family could take that back home and have their own Easter egg hunt in the comfort of their own home. And this concludes staff presentation, be happy to answer any additional questions if council may, may have.
Great, thank you, I don't have any, I don't know if anybody has any questions, I just, I was, I saw it on here, so I just wanted to get a little overview on it. Mayor Protem, did you have any?
I just wanted to add, um, I'm happy to hear that you're bringing some part-time staff to work. I know their hours were cut dramatically, so not only am I happy to hear that, I know we're not spending a lot of money on it. Uh, and even if we were, I think right now at this given time. A resident needs, they need an outlet because they have been stuck at home uh, without being able to get out there as they were doing it in a safe manner. And um, the money you're spending, uh, maybe we can use the American Rescue Plan, part of that money shot into. To make up for it, so I, I think it's a great idea that, that you're bringing that. I was just not sure how much, what the expenses were and how you were going about where the money was coming from. But uh, it's, it's a mental health project, if you really think about it, the community is gonna go out and have a good time. And, and your staff can come in and get some much-needed hours, I'm sure, so thank you, Manny.
Thank you very much.
All right, Manny, all I have, my only question I have is uh, who's gonna be dressing up in a, in the bunny suit?
You.
Happy to bring me, bring, rent a bunny suit, I'll do it, I have no problem.
We may have you do it.
I'm in.
It's a lot of responsibility because that bunny suit gets very hot.
I'm in. I'll wear shorts.
I have a que, I have a question for you, Manny, so. Where would, where would you start the line of cars? Uh, would you be giving notice, are you gonna close down part of Baldwin Park Boulevard, how is that gonna work?
If you take a look at the staff report, you have a map uh, on the flyer as well as an attachment. So it is going to start on Ramona. Uh, and you're gonna make the right on Caesar E Chavez. And then you're going to follow that and then you're going to make a left on Lorenz. And then you're gonna make another left behind the park, behind the soccer field, in front of McNeil Manor. Behind the community center and then you will exit on Baldwin Park Boulevard, so if you could visually see that.
Would you be closing down one of the lanes on Ramona?
Uh, probably have to defer that to Public Works or the chief. We did have some lessons learned for the Halloween event, it was so successful. Uh, we had to bring out uh, some calming di- devices, but Sam or chief, if you'd like to. Uh, contribute to how we're going to administer uh, the traffic.
You know, it's, Sam, Sam's usually the one that uh, drives that for us, we're uh, you know, the, the support for him as well.
And honestly, I mean, the, the only, the only reason why I say is, if we are gonna close down the lane, maybe we're gonna give, uh, you know, plenty of notice. To the residents so that maybe if they're not gonna be needing to be in that area, maybe kind of avoid it during the uh, events time. Just so that we don't have a big buildup of traffic and people complaining. Just kind of maybe a few days notice, put it out there that we're gonna be closing down part of Ramona. And kind of show the map of where it's gonna be, that way people know to try to avoid that area.
Absolutely, we will put that on social media, we'll also, I'm sure Sam will respond right now, but we, we will also put our, our big. Traffic marquee boards informing the, the community that we are going to have some reduction of lanes, Sam.
Yeah, Public Works has the message boards that they could put out, Sam.
Yes, so uh, yeah, we're gonna bring out. Reports, we're, we'll, we'll put them a, along Ramona. We are going to handle this exactly, uh, or very similar to uh, the Halloween. So uh, flow plan already set up, uh, it worked well during Halloween, I think, we, we, we learned a lot. Uh, we incorporated some of those lessons, but I think uh, we should have a good event.
Great, thank you.
Great, looking forward to that and as Mayor Protem mentioned, it's, I think it's, it's much needed for the community to. Out and, and, and you know, even for a little drive and, and you know, get some Easter eggs. So with that said, uh, motion to pass item number seven, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, any objections? None. Well, item passes and at this point we move on to city council acting as successor agency of the dissolved community development commission consent calendar. And I will make a motion to pass the consent calendar, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? None. Thank you, so item passes and at this point we move on to city council acting as successor housing agency of the dissolved community development commission, uh, content calendar. And I believe we only have one item on this, but I uh, uh, do we have anybody here from Habitat for Humanity?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we have Grant Power here from Habitat for Humanity.
Great. Hi, Grant, how are you doing?
Hello. Well, thank you.
Great, so I don't, so this item is, is a pretty exciting one, it has to do with housing and, and I'm, I'm pretty excited about it, I've been stoked about it forever, so I'm glad that it's finally on the agenda. Um, so maybe if you want to give us an overview on, on what the potential is at this site.
Well, we're excited because we see this site as an opportunity to expand affordable homeownership opportunities for low-income families in Baldwin Park. And uh, we see this as a possible venue for the construction of new single-family detached properties or homes. On the subdivided lots as they currently exist or perhaps a higher density uh, play, depending on how the, the discretion of city council.
Great, and then so Habitat for Humanity only do single residential detached homes?
No, we actually do have a history of, in the San Gabriel Valley of developing uh, multifamily attached homes. And uh, so that is also a possibility in the case of this particular property.
Great, so Grant, I know, I, I kind of snooped around the Habitat for Humanity uh, website and I know that you guys also have this branch that focuses on veteran housing, right?
Yes.
And so I think my, my vision for that property, I know that it's a pretty big lot would be if we can build. Uh, multifamily homes and then we can potentially benefit Baldwin Park families and of course Baldwin Park veterans.
Yeah, Ha- Habitat for Humanity San Gabriel Valley has a flexible view of this opportunity. And that means to us that we can work with the city in, in concert with its own aims, uh, both with regard to the number of units as well as those who. Uh, could arguably be eligible to live there in the future.
Great, and I know that we are, uh, they're called home funds, they're federal funds, right? But they are for specifically for lower-class families. Uh, in the, in the income bracket, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know, maybe Ben can kind of uh, talk about that.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, for this particular acquisition, the city's loaning uh. Former redevelopment low mod set aside funds, they're called, we're not actually using federal home funds. For this particular uh, transaction, we will use that kind of funding for other projects, so. Um, this is uh, housing money that we, the city has had. For, for, you know, low income, for, for low, low and moderate income housing um, projects. So this project though, is Habitat specializes in providing homeownership. To low-income families, which is not easy to do. And, and we could just briefly say that, you know, Habitat does this through, you know, a lot of education. Um, and guiding the bor- borrowers and what they're getting into the responsibilities of homeownership, so. Because it's not the easiest thing in the world for anyone to buy and own and operate and maintain a home. But especially a, a lower-income family, it's, it's, it could be a big, uh, a big responsibility. It's something that Habitat specializes in guiding these families into this ci- these situations so they're successful. And so um, that's what we want to do with the property, work with Habitat to do that.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ben. And then um, so I don't know, Brandon, maybe you want to kind of explain a little bit about Habitat for Humanity and what your process is, how you, how you go through that process to put people in these homes?
Habitat for Humanity engages in a uh, wide-ranging community outreach. Uh, in which we uh, make known the opportunity to purchase homes among a broad range of people in the community. And uh, in the process, families are uh, selected and qualified. And other persons who uh, may be eligible and wanting to live in these units. Um, we do um, uh, cooperate with the city on a local preference. Uh, we also want to do that consistent with fair housing, uh, just to make sure that um, there's an opportunity for many people to. To uh, apply who may wish to do so. Uh, but the intent here is to ensure that uh. People of low incomes and by that I mean eighty percent of the county area median income or below. Uh, would have the chance to purchase a property once they are made eligible through the application process at, at Habitat. Uh, we have an extensive program involving sweat equity, involving homebuyer education. Uh, involving also um, the opportunity to receive a mortgage which is originated by Habitat or at low or no interest. Um, and which makes it then possible for them to afford a house at thirty percent of their income at the time of purchase, whatever that income level may be. We also monitor affordability restrictions to ensure that those units uh, will not be placed on the open market in the future.
Great, so I don't know if any, any council members have any questions or concerns?
Oh, I don't have a question, I just want to express that I'm just as excited as you um, to hear that this is in the works, so. I'm just pushing and praying that everything goes through and that we can get this project going, so I'm very excited, thank you.
Yeah, and then Grant, are you, do you, uh, I mean, we've kind of been asking, but do you take volunteers when you start building the homes?
That's right.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, please come out and join us, we'd like to have your help with the construction when the time comes.
Really, we discussed that and we do want to do that.
Mayor Protem's been expressing her readiness, she says she has her belt ready, she's got the hammer, she's got the nail gun, she's got it all, she's ready to go.
I've done it before, so.
That's great.
I'm looking forward to it, definitely.
Yeah, well, thank you, Grant, for being here, I, you know, I'm super excited about this, I think it's a great opportunity, I'm looking forward to working with Habitat and, and what we can accomplish for, for.
We're, we're very pleased, thank you, we're just very pleased and grateful to have this opportunity as well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, no, I, I, I really appreciate everything that you and uh, your organization does, Grant, uh, you know, the, the, the building. Or the home, I should say, that's over, um, the newly one over on, I think, Olive, uh, if I remember correctly, um, is beautiful. Uh, you know, it's, I can't wait, um, you know, to get the family in there and, you know, make them, uh, you know, part of our fabric. Uh, the one thing I will say as, you know, as the concerns were earlier for when we spoke about uh, earlier development. Uh, just be mindful, you know, as you go through the process, you know, we want to make sure that we can fit as many folks into the, into that site. Uh, my only concern, um, as I've stated in the past, or actually this will be the first time publicly, uh, because we've talked about this in public, is uh, parking. Uh, there are, uh, you know, other residential homes that are around, around that, so you know, I'd love to, you know, again, uh, you know. Clean that area which, you know, which I have no doubts, uh, Habitat uh, for Humanity will do so. Uh, but we also want to be uh, respectful of the neighbors that live there, uh, especially the single-family homes that are on the other side. So just, you know, as you're developing your process. you know, as you're developing your process, uh, it just be, you know, I, I know that's in the back of your head, but I just want to reiterate that. Um, so we can fit it, you know, you know, fit in as many people as we, as we possibly can, uh, into those sites. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So, uh, thank you, Grant, for being here. Like I said, super excited and super. You know, I'm, I'm ready. You're, you're going to have Mayor Protem there. You're going to have me. I'm sure we'll have everybody else. City staff, we're going to force them to be out there. We're going to finish these homes quick. So.
One come all.
Yeah. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Yes, I want to, um, just thank Habitat for Humanity, Grant. Thank you for the, you know, attention, the investment in our community. Um, I know that the, the two projects along Baldwin Park Boulevard at Olive, um, you know, turned out really nice and I, I'm looking forward to this third project. So I did see that you had crews out in just scorching heat. Um, and, um, I just know how dedicated you are to providing these, this housing to our community. So definitely extend the invitation to us when the time comes. Hopefully it won't be, you know, the, the crazy temperatures that I saw your guys working under. Um, yeah, you, yeah, I, I mean, I, it was, it was pretty intense. Uh, but thank you again for your commitment and for your investment in our community. And please do invite us when the time comes.
Thank you, Grant. So at this moment I'll make a motion to pass item HSA dash one. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? None. So item passes and we move on. Thank you. We have a public hearing and that is a request to the city council from planning commission to approve a development agreement 20 dash O2 to allow the conversion of a double sided static billboard into a double sided LED digital billboard. Um, at this moment I'll open up, uh, public hearing. City clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
No, no speakers.
Great. So nobody in favor or opposition. So at this moment I will move to close the public hearing. Um, and then council members, any questions, any concerns?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, I do have some questions for staff regarding comparisons of the fee. And I'd like to know how this, how this project compares to other conversions, um, as far as the fees that we collect annually. Is that a question for Shannon?
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Uh, Ben, do you have any insight on, on, uh, the comparison of the fees for the other billboards? Um, I don't have that available with me now.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, the fee, the, the proposed fee for this project mitigation fee is $72,000 annually. This is, uh, in line, we, we've done, the city has done many, uh, billboard projects and going back several years, 72,000 is, is, uh, what, uh, not all the signs are the same. So it's hard to compare them exactly. Some of them are more quote unquote valuable than others, depending on their location on, on the freeway. But 72,000 is the amount that has, uh, been negotiated in the more recent history. Um, and so it is, it does actually represent the, the most that we're getting for one, um, one individual sign, $72,000 a year.
So, so Ben, um, are you saying that, do you have the history of, of the approvals in the past? Um, I, I think in the past, when we entertained a, a conversion like this, we've been able to be briefed in advance so that we know, you know, the fees as they compare to other projects that are similar, because in this case we have two faces that are being converted. You know, we have, um, we have the two faces that are static that are being converted to digital. So I'd like to know how it compares to other projects in the past that, you know, had the same request and approval, because sometimes we've been able to get a fee for each side. So I just want to understand how does this compare?
Okay, um, like we do have, I don't have them with me, council member, but we do have, um, a record of all of the, um, of the negotiated agreements we have for each billboard. Um, this does represent the most, but we, we could, I could, we, we could bring this back. And I can provide, uh, you know, kind of the comparison analysis of each, uh, of, of each billboard. But in general, it is the highest amount. Uh, it's equal to the highest amount we've gotten in the recent history. But I'd be happy to break that down. We can bring this back, item back and break it down.
And Ben, I know that you, um, since you were here and started here, that you did put together the portfolio of all the billboards, um, that we have. Um, and I know you did bring a consultant in to analyze those billboards to make sure we were getting the best, um, money for each site. Um, and I do believe this is in line with, um, the other most recent billboards that we've, uh, the revenue that we've gotten for the two sided digital billboards.
Were they, Shannon, were they, um, about the 70,000 range for both? For both sides?
Yes. Yeah. That was for two faces. Correct. No. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, because why, why Shannon, remind me, I think that in, in the past, we've been able to get somewhere upwards of 110 or so. Am I, am I delusional on that?
No, we were able to get more at Barnes Park, um, but that's because we own the land. So we're, we're not only getting a mitigation fee there, but we're also getting um, sort of, uh, lease basically for the, the use of the land.
Okay. So that's why it seemed like it was significantly lower here.
Correct. But this is in line with the Harley Davidson billboard, which was more recent and the other Becker boards that went up on the 605. This is, this is very much in line with those.
Is it? Okay. And it's in line with what other billboard, billboard conversions have, um, you know, those, those transactions, if you will, from other cities. That's what the consultant confirmed.
They, he, he looked at that. It's very difficult to do because, you know, a, a, a a billboard on the 57 freeway in Orange County is going to be different than, you know, billboard on, on the 10 and 605. There's a lot of billboards around us in Irwindale. Um, so we are a little bit of a unique market. I think there's only a couple in Almonte. Um, but I know he did look at that and, and Ben, you can elaborate, but I think he felt, you know, we were getting a good value for, um, what we're looking at.
Okay. Because currently as a static, do you know what we receive if any, if any fees from the static?
Yeah, we, we don't receive anything.
Because it's already so outdated. Okay. Well, yeah, I don't know why, but it just seems kind of low. Um, I'll just, I'll just leave it there and let, you know, the other council, the members of the council chime in.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman Garcia, Councilwoman Garcia, I remember exactly, um, the time then, and I, I know why it sounds low because there was one that was over 100. I do recall that conversation. I wasn't a council member then, but I recall you guys, uh, going through that. And there was a billboard at one point that, that it was over 100. So that's probably what you're, you're thinking about. That's the first thing that went through my mind after he mentioned the amount, but it does make sense, uh, after discussion of the, the one for the Harley Davidson and the other ones, but there was one for over 100 at one point.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, Ben or Ron, if, is there any, uh, time sensitivity in regards to moving this forward today? Or can we just move this back, uh, perhaps, you know, to the next council meeting, uh, where staff could, uh, provide the entire council with, uh, that documentation. Cause I know it's done. It's just, you know, so that way we can have it. But more importantly, if you could attach it to the report so the, so the community is, is aware of that.
Yes, there, yes, there's no time sensitivity and we can bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Garcia, would you feel, uh, obliged to make a motion to kick this over?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you for chiming in, um, Mayor Protem and Councilman. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll motion just to, to, um, table the item and bring it back at the next council meeting.
Second.
Uh, Mayor, if I could just, uh, ask the attorney to chime in because it's a public hearing. I think we would need to close the public hearing portion and then continue the item to the next meeting. That way we don't have to re, uh, re-advertise it. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Um, Shannon, we did, uh, close the public hearing and, uh, we did open it and close it. So we can continue it now. And we would not have to, uh, redo the public hearing.
Thank you.
Great. So this moment I close the public hearing. Um, and then I believe somebody made a
Yes, it was second. It was already seconded.
Great. Any objections?
And, and, and we did close it. You did close it earlier, Mr. Mayor. So that had been closed.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Okay. Good. So we're good. Uh, any objection? None. So, uh, we can table this over for the next one. And that's okay. And then we move on to our city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff request and communication. And Mayor Protem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted, um, I did request an update on the, to fill the vacancy on the city commissions. And the only reason why I did that is because I know this entails a lot of work. I know, uh, city clerk Lulu is the one involved in all this. And I just want to make sure that, that we didn't overfill your plate and pushing that this by a certain speed. I want to make sure that you have enough time, um, to, to advertise these commissions. Um, and I don't want you to feel pressure because I know it was like something last minute last time. If you can just give me more or less where you're at and, and let me know if you will have enough time to get this
agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, Mayor Protem, yes, we, uh, can definitely make that deadline uh, for, uh, early May, uh, to mid May to fill the vacancies in June. I'm currently working with staff, uh, on providing additional detail of the roles and responsibilities for each commission. And we are going to present to you with the educational video portion of that. Uh, place it on the website, uh, do, uh, additional community outreach, uh, in order to engage civic, uh, uh, engagement. Um, and I'm also planning on revamping the package, uh, the welcome package to the commissions so that it could be cohesive, um, and uniformed for all commissions. So we are good on time and, uh, we'll be able to, to make that request, fulfill that request, uh, by June.
Thank you, Ms. Lulu. I was just a bit concerned because I know it is a lot of work doing public outreach. It takes time. Uh, so I wanted to make sure you feel all that pressure and that we can meet the deadline. Thank you for the update. Um, my second discussion, uh, direction to have a study session on HR policies and procedure, procedures. So my concern is I'm not sure of what, I know all HR, um, has a lot of responsibility and we know, we need to follow a lot of policies based on federal law and state law. So I would like us to be more familiar with the policies are because I know sometimes as a council, we may be asking things that are just not possible because you're following either federal law, state law, some type of legislature. So I would like to get familiarized and maybe if we need to update the policies to make sure they're all aligned. I know, um, PD and HR work together. So I want to be able to understand what the policies are to make sure that they're aligned. So, so that everybody's on the same page when, when something comes up in the police department, HR is aware and, and that we know policies and procedures of what we can be informed of and what we cannot be informed of. And all those items. So Laura, I would like, um, to have a study session and, and so you can update us and inform us, educate us on those processes that you have in HR. Um, my next discussion, um, I would like to send out an RFQ for public, uh, public relation firms. So the reason behind that, I want to be able to compare what kind of services other public relation firms offer when it comes to, uh, giving, uh, you know, kudos to the city for things happening. And, um, I know a lot of times they put a lot of negative things in the media. I'm not saying that it's coming from our firm, but I want to understand, uh, exactly what what we're getting from our company that we're getting, that we have now and what other relation firms, um, public relation firms have to offer. So we can compare and, and make sure that we do have a firm that, that is doing the best outreach for our city and that is putting out the information that, that we would like out there to be outlined and highlighted for our city. So that's the reason, uh, behind that RFQ. I just want to see what else other firms have to offer for us. So if we can get that going, I would really appreciate that. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem, in regards to the public relation, uh, firm RFQ, just for clarification, are you asking to do what we did, uh, that, you know, similar, uh, council member Damian did with our engineering firm to add additional uh, public relation firms to a, say, on call, uh, list. So we can use them, um, as we need because, uh, the current HR, uh, the, the current PR firm, as I understand it, uh, they're more for crisis communication. Uh, the feel good stuff that you're mentioning, they have done some of that work, but I don't think that's necessarily their specialty. Uh, but are we at, are we, are you looking to add additional firms that could also, that can do, uh, you know, the, the feel good stuff and then also have, you know, the, uh, the other firm that does crisis communication. Cause I will tell you this, uh, there, in the world of PR, there's definitely different firms that do uh, different specialization. And I hate to, you know, lose on, uh, some of the knowledge uh, and experience that the current firms using. And I'd be, you know, certainly happy to have, uh, more HR firms that we could have on our, on our, uh, on our call sheet, uh, given, you know, the need or whatever we might, uh, require at the time.
Actually, I'm looking to compare the services. I, I don't want to have all kinds of different public relations companies working for us. I want somebody that knows our city, that knows what we're about, that knows the ins and outs of our city. And I want to see how they do their public relations and, and what is the process. I want to be able to compare with what we have now to see what their processes are and the services they have to offer. So that is my intent, not to have, uh, additional on call. No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, did you want to make a motion?
Um, do I have to make a motion for this, uh, or?
Just because it's an RF, an RF, uh, an RP rate.
Um, yes, you're asking for an RFQ, um, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, I don't think it would hurt for a motion, uh, since we are going to go out for RFQ.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for an RFQ for public relation firms.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any objection? All right.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Um, I'd like to ask, uh, our chief of police, if they can pre, please, uh, come back and provide us, uh, a written report in regards to where we stand and the timeframe, uh, in which we will begin to uh, discuss the implementation of the body cams. Uh, you know, we did this close almost a year ago. Uh, you know, we, the city, we set aside some money in this as a, as a, during the council. Uh, I know we reallocated certain funds that were received from Senator Rubio for this also. Um, so I just like to know uh, if the chief of police and his staff could provide a written report and we can have this in, uh, study session. So at the, you know, perhaps at the next one or in early, in April at some time, I'll leave it at, I'll leave it up to staff to um, indicate which one, uh, so we know what the status is and what else needs to be, uh, occurring. Cause the last that we received uh, information was that they were doing the last of the testing, uh, earlier this year. Um, so I think at this point, uh, all the testing should have been done. Uh, but I'd like to see, you know, that and also in writing, but also, uh, presented during public session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I know, I know that we've been asking for a lot of, uh, open, open and study sessions. I know Mayor Protem has a making a, a long list as well. But I, I do want to ask and, and I, I hope the council agrees that we, that we should prioritize a, a study session on opening up a, a safe parking zone for those, uh, that are currently sleeping and living in their cars. This is a, I think if I'm not mistaken, it was, uh, something that's been brought up to the previous council, maybe about over a year ago. And, and we haven't seen much movement on that. So, and I think that at this point it's something that we have to prioritize. And, and really try to get. and, and really try to get a move on. You know, the, this way, those who are living in their cars at this point have a safe place to park overnight and, and they're going to feel a little bit more comfortable at the very least.
I agree, Mayor, and maybe we can have special meetings to have those because there are a lot of things on there that, as you said, so let's prioritize. That's pretty, that's a priority and have special meetings to get through this. If it's okay with you.
And I think we have most of that information already readily available, so it's likely we could have the safe parking zones back at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'll be great. And that way we can figure out what it's going to take to, to get these things going and, and and at, at least offer some sort of service to, to people who are currently experiencing homelessness. Great, thank you. And so at this moment, I do open, I do move to open the Ballpark Finance Authority virtual meeting. So, roll call, City Clerk.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
Here. At this moment, I'll make a motion to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No, I move to adjourn the Finance Authority virtual meeting. And I call to order the Ballpark Housing Authority virtual meeting. And I will move to make a motion to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? None, item passes, and I do move to adjourn the Ballpark Housing Authority virtual meeting. And I believe at this point, we are all done with our agenda items. And I believe at this moment, we are going to go back into closed session. Is that correct, Shannon?
That is correct, and we will use the previous closed session Zoom meeting, and then we'll need to log back onto this one to report out.
Great, so I will see you all there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Hey, everybody.
Hi there.
Great, so everybody's here. Where is... Robert's here. Robert, can you report out? City Attorney, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council considered multiple items in closed session. The city council voted on one item, so there was one final action taken. And that is the city council voted 5-0. And I believe it was Vice Mayor Alejandro Avila who made the motion. And I believe it was Councilmember Damian that seconded. And this, the motion was to grant a, agree to a settlement with Lolita Ignacio. The case name, for $30,000. The case name is Lolito Ignacio v. the City of Baldwin Park. Case number 20-146557. And again, the city council voted 5-0 to settle that case for $30,000. It was a accident case in the City of Baldwin Park.
Great, thank you for that, City Attorney. And at this point, I will move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Great, any objections? No? Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.